Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Harrison Township Planning Commission meeting. Today is Thursday, October 6th, 2025. May I have a... We are minus two this evening. Our secretary... Would anyone like to... No. Who would like to act as secretary tonight? If I don't get a hand raised, I will appoint. Anyone?
I will take... I will do that.
Thank you, Mr. Batja. Call the meeting to order at 7:00. Roll call, please.
Member Batja, present. Member Devlin...
Excused absent.
Member Duncan...
Here.
Member Mulder...
Present.
Member Tommello...
Here.
Member Olparca...
Excused absent.
Shareperson Murray...
Present.
Approval of our agenda is presented, please. Motion to approve. May I have a second?
Support.
A motion by Mr. Duncan, supported by Mr. Mulder. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. May I have approval of our minutes from our last meeting, July 17th, 2025? And if you notice any changes, please... Please make that known.
Support.
Motion to approve, August 20... I'm sorry, did I say July 17th? I did. I meant August 21st, 2025. So let me amend that. Amend your motion. Amend your support.
Yes.
Thank you. Any opposed? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, that was backwards. Okay. It's kind of like a Monday. We missed last Monday. All right. Our first hearing and review, Mr. Batja.
Case number 23-25-S. Boat Town Liquor 35550 and 35542, Jefferson Avenue. Property ID of 17-11-36-229-002. And 17-11-36-229-034, Harrison Township, Michigan, 48045, zoned as V1. Site plan review for the proposed addition to the existing Boat Town Liquor store.
Thank you. Is the applicant present? Hi, can you come over? And while you're getting all your paperwork out, I'm going to ask Mr. Young to go ahead and give us a brief rundown.
Okay. The applicants are here. This is a proposed expansion and addition to the Boat Town Liquor store. The zoning, it's two properties next to each other, both owned by the applicant. The... It includes the property where the current Boat Town Liquor store is located, as well as the adjacent property that has an identically sized building, but is currently vacant or unoccupied, that site. And the applicant is proposing to extend the Boat Town Liquor store through an addition that would basically bridge the gap between the two buildings presently, and then connect into the other existing building to create one larger building where the liquor store would be expanded into. And you can see up on the site plan, this is up on screen. The... When it's combined into one building, it'd be 6,400 square feet. So additional improvements at the site include a additional parking, improvements to the parking lot, loading area, dumpster with screening, landscaping, lighting, new filling in along the back, the rear property line. There's a gap in the existing wall. They're going to fill in that. I think it's about a 20-foot gap in the wall.
Yep.
Along the frontage, along the road, they're going to construct a three-foot-tall decorative knee wall as well. We did provide a review of the project and really only found a couple of minor comments, and then one more significant comment. The minor comments, in fact, the applicant has since supplied us with an updated site plan that addressed a couple few of the minor comments. So really, the only comments that remain in the review letter... Well, I'll go through all five of the comments. Comment number one, there is an existing sign, and the applicant added in a note to the plan indicating that the sign will require permitting if he wanted to make any changes in the future from the township through a separate approval. So they've addressed that comment. Number two, just to the ordinance, and then I can go and show the proposed building elevation. The ordinance requires certain building materials and styles. They do meet the required elements for building materials. The only thing with the ordinance which suggests in this district that there be some element of a nautical theme. So we can maybe just ask the applicant if they have any thoughts about what type of a nautical element or detailing could they add to the building facade. Plant materials, there was just a discrepancy in the number of plant materials on the list, on the quantities list. They've addressed that on the updated plan. Skipping down to number five, they have addressed the masonry decorative screen wall. They did provide or update that detail to show that it'd be three-foot tall. And the biggest comment is, comment number four, what... I can show the floor plan here. They're showing... They're showing the parking calculations based on a combination of warehouse and retail. Retail, the formula is one parking space per 250 square feet. Warehouse is one parking space per 2,000 square feet. They had come to us at the tech team level, and we had talked about that could be a possibility if there was a very clear distinction between the retail operation and a separate storage operation. But in reviewing, in my opinion, in reviewing this plan, the entire floor plan here with possibly you could consider maybe the 600-foot back room. But the entire floor plan, in my opinion, is part of the retail operation. You've got the 3,800 square feet of sales area. You've got the walk-in coolers, the beer caves. You've got the offices for the retail sales, the restroom for the retail sales. So I do not believe, even with their... They did update the square footages for us, so at least we see that better. I don't believe they need the spirit of the ordinance as is required. Essentially, this plan shows the entirety of the building to be dedicated to retail usage, and therefore, the retail parking space formula would apply. And that means they're deficient in the number of parking spaces at the site. They would, by my calculations, they would need about 18 or maybe 19 parking spaces. They're showing 11. 11 total parking spaces.
So deficient by eight?
Yeah. And that does include a... The V1 district encourages this type of redevelopment and actually provides a parking space reduction, but that's included in the 18 or 19 required spaces already. They do acknowledge on their site plan that they will need to secure several variances from the zoning board of appeals. I don't... I think we need to address the parking situation on the site, and I'm curious to find out if they have any solutions to that. But they will be going to the ZBA for some variances for this site. That is something that they could request, some waiver of parking that is on the table at least, but that's outside of our purview. Just so you're aware, the three variances that they need to obtain is to allow... The V1 district encourages new development, redevelopment to be more village-oriented, mixed-use, walkable. It would suggest that the addition should be up at the road. So they're seeking a variance in that regard from the build-to line. They're seeking variance to allow parking in the front yard as it is. And in the back, the back portion of the site encroaches into the rear yard setback by, I think, nine feet or so. Although the building addition is in the... In line with the... Or it's no closer to the rear yard than the current buildings are. So that's another variance that they'll need to secure. So I think the biggest talking point tonight is the off-street parking need. If you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to try and answer them. I also... I know that John, our township engineer, is not here this evening, wasn't able to make it.
We do have his...
Yeah.
We do have his letter, however.
He had said that his biggest comment in that letter, there's some details that need to be addressed on the engineering side, but the sanitary service to this site needs to be illustrated, the sanitary sewer needs to be illustrated on the site, was his major comment. But he did not see any significant issues with the overall design of the site.
Our fire chief is present? Hi.
Hi.
We received your letter as well, and I believe you indicate that there were no issues. Were we at all concerned with fire lanes? You know what? I didn't look to see if the fire lanes were present on the updated site plan.
So everything that's on the site plan that I reviewed meets the...
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Anything additional, Mr. Young?
I don't think so.
Okay.
At this point.
All right. Questions for the planner? Hi.
Hello.
Thank you for your patience.
Hello.
So you want to go ahead and tell us who you are?
Yes.
And speak to your site?
Yes. My name is Enes Kestoe. I'm one of the consultants at CK Construction, the site plan, and owner, Bashar. How are you?
Okay. And you're... You agree with everything that was presented?
I do, yes.
By our planner?
Yep.
Is there anything additional that you want to mention regarding the updated site plan, or any other thoughts relative to the entire space being dedicated to retail that leads us into the parking issue?
Go back. Four. Three. So yeah, I think you had mentioned that we originally did the calculations based on just the gross sales area for the parking. But then realized it had to include the operation area as well. We had... We had done the parking. Actually, there's 12 parking spots. Said 11. 11 plus a handicap, so a total of 12, but it still doesn't meet the 18 and 1/2. We rounded up to 19. 18 and 1/2 parking spaces per the calculation, which is why we were going to seek that variance first to see if we can do parking in the front. And either that, or we may just have to restructure the floor plan so that we could add more storage area, reduce the amount of the sales and operation area to meet the... To reduce the parking.
To be more compliant?
To be more compliant, yep.
And are you prepared to go to the next available zoning board of appeals meeting?
Yes, for the three variances that were discussed?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? I'm sorry, anything additional before we open it up?
No. As far as number two, having some kind of nautical elements, we will address that and update them. We'll look at some designs we can do in the front. I don't know, pirate ship wheel or something.
Lighting.
Yeah.
Lighting can go...
Next addition.
Yeah.
Siding, any type of siding, a shap... Yeah, shaplat or...
They do have the siding. They do... They're doing the hardy board horizontal siding, which is what our ordinance requires. So they do have that. Yeah, I think lighting would be a good addition, you know. You know, we've always, I think we've talked about this at the planning commission level. We're not looking for something that's, you know, not tasteful.
Right.
So we don't want loud and garish. Some small additions would... Is really what the ordinance is called.
Goes on with...
So with looking at the variances and stuff in the parking situation, if everything comes to fruition with what you're looking for, how many spots would you then have based upon today's plan?
Well, based on the space available, can't really add any more parking... Any more parking. We even thought about, want to just pull up the site plan. Where the loading zone would have been, but then... But loading zone, we even thought of doing parallel parking spots, but even then, it would only give us two, but that would take away from the loading zone. So that's why we're most likely going to have to just rework the floor plan to reduce the gross sales and operation area somehow.
You have 6,224 square feet to work with, I think, correct?
Yeah. Yep, that would be minus storage.
That should afford some flexibility.
Yeah, there was minus the back room area where it would be storage. I don't know if we took into consideration the hallway being part of the operation area or not. I'll have to go back and look at the... Oh, the engineer calculated that exactly. But we might just have to make some adjustments to the floor plan itself to reduce some of the operation area in order to meet the requirement. Just because the site, the way it is, no matter how much we try to play around with it, seems like 12 was the most we can get out of it. 14 if we take away the loading zone, but I can totally... And I can totally understand the loading zone for trucks to come in and load and unload.
Are you able to reposition the loading zone? I'm not su... I'd have to look at, to see what the requirements are for placement.
Well, the only two places it would be would be either on that side or right up next to the building.
Right up against the building is what I was thinking.
Yeah. So we could do the loading zone there, and then add parallel parking, but...
Or just even angled.
Yeah.
The ordinance would not allow loading zone in the front yard?
That's... Yep. No, it would be next to the building.
Next to the building, next to the side of the building.
Next to the side of the building.
Right now, it's on the property edge.
I see.
As opposed to the building edge.
We would do some parallel parking there.
If it were moved to the building edge, and then maybe even more toward the back of the property, back of the edge of the building, that might afford you some slanted parking along that property.
Yes, we did think about that. However, it would close off access to the dumpster. That's why we kind of left that as a loading zone. That way, it can be, act as both. Pathway for the dumpster truck to come in and pick up the trash, and also, there's a loading zone. We could... Thought about doing angled parking along the building, and then skip the two parking spaces that you see all the way on the south side, but that would only give us two additional parking spaces.
Well, that, along with making some adjustments to your retail space...
Yeah.
Might get you closer.
If we can... We can make 14 parking spots and adjust the retail space to meet 14, then it's probably the way we're going to go.
Commissioners, any questions for the applicant regarding the parking discussion?
I think theirs is a pretty transient clientele anyways. We're coming and going pretty quickly for the most part.
Pretty quick, yeah, yep.
Yeah. It's a difficult area with that, you know, pretty much shuttered gas station right next to you. And a few times I've been in your location, it seems like you guys do a pretty good job trying to keep it clean.
Yeah.
So it's definitely a difficult area.
Yeah. Now, he did make a suggestion... The owner had made a suggestion, we try not to go that route, but if we have to, and the option is available, to have an agreement with the gas station, with the owner of the gas station to have some additional parking. I don't know if that would be something be considered.
I think our formula's on-site parking. I know we've made accommodations for restaurant additional parking off-site. Do you think of restrictions for liquor store?
I think the ordinance does allow for some sort of a shared arrangement like that, but it wouldn't... You wouldn't be able to take away any parking that's required by the gas station, and there's also a practical solution, you know, issue of, you know, you can't access the gas station parking lot from their main drive. Unless they reconfigured it to include a couple...
Yeah, like a sidewalk that would continue.
Yeah, because the wall is...
Yep.
You've got the wall there.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Also, from the fireside, if they take over the gas station for parking, change of use of that property, and the underground tanks would have to be addressed.
Okay.
That's also governed by the state of Michigan.
Yeah.
Well, you've got some work to do for parking configuration.
Yep.
And you know, you've got your three variances that you're planning to go to the ZBA for. You've agreed to address the nautical elements on the building exterior. You've addressed the three-foot wall versus the six-foot. Your landscaping is in compliance. Let's see. So you've addressed the issue with storage versus retail. Clearly, it can all be retail. Any other questions for the applicant? Do you have...
It's a bit more administrative, but respecting that, you're going to... You're going to be going back and revising and resubmitting your documents.
Correct.
And if all the points we've addressed are certainly appropriate. One thing that I see here that is administrative, that I find to be a bit clumsy, is, I mean, I know our planner has study review drawings that are dated 8/15, but I'm looking through the set here, and I've got drawings dated 6/23, 8/15, 6/25. I mean, they're dated all over the place.
Oh, you've been working on this for a while, or...
Well, I just would ask that when you resubmit the documents, they're all submitted as...
Yeah. So usually, the software that we use called Revit, when we're done with a page and we don't go back and make any revisions to it, it just keeps that date stamp when we print it, but we can... Yeah, just change the font color and look safe.
Good catch, Mr. Batja. Anything else? Do you have any questions for us?
Not at this time, no.
Okay. Go ahead and have a seat.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, team. Why don't we go ahead and address the two other issues, while the one issue, selfridges. I believe that had no issue. Okay, so there is a delay doing everything electronically. Based on the review of the plans from September 19th, no water retention or other wildlife hazard attractants as defined by the FAA are being proposed. Therefore, the proposal plans would be consistent with the AQs and the FAA land use recommendations. So selfridges doesn't have any issues, so that's good. You know what? Is this your full stack?
That's the engineering and selfridges and the...
Let's talk engineering. Okay. Site plan review, general, no soil borings, existing utilities are shown, water main, there's no water main works proposed, no storm sewer work proposed, sanitary sewer. Sorry, I'm not taking into view paving and traffic. So, I'm sorry. Thank you. So you did read the engineers' notes regarding the paving and the traffic, regarding sheet SP1 shows proposed concrete sidewalk and curb. Please indicate details for both. Okay. And based on his review, they recommend approval?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to table 2325 SPR to allow the applicant time to go to the ZBA for the required variances, and to update plans and resubmit plans with all items identified, both in the engineering and the planner's comments. And I will not make that to a date specific, because I don't know how long it's going to take, so just the next available date.
Okay. We have a motion, as noted, to table this item to allow the applicant time to address the variances, update the plans appropriately, making mention of the date and everything else that we discussed, and addressing all the planner's comments. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Batja. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So we'll see you again when you have the... When you have the items completed and you're ready to come back. Thank you very much. Okay, our next case, please, Mr. Batja.
Case number 20-25-SLU, Huron Point Excavating, North River Road, property ID 17-12-16-101-006, Harrison Township, Michigan, 48045, currently zoned as waterfront. This is a special land use to use property as a storage yard for miscellaneous equipment and materials for marine construction.
Thank you, Mr. Batja. This is a public hearing this evening. First, we will have the planner give us the fine details, and then we will dive in. Mr. Young?
This is a request from Huron Point Excavating for a property that is located along North River Road on the north shore of the Clinton River. According to their application, they are seeking to establish this new marine contracting business use, to use this site as a staging area and for the parking of their barge, and using it as a staging area for unloading and loading and unloading activities related to their operation. The property, the total subject property is 20,500 square feet in size, though they've indicated on the plans that they... indicated on the plans that they're, they're looking at only leasing a portion of the property, only, that leased portion is 11,500 square feet in size. The property is owned WF Waterfront District. The Waterfront District does allow marine construction, maintenance, equipment, use and storage as a special land use, and that's why the, the public hearing is required as a special land use this evening. In addition to that area being used as a staging and storage area for marine contracting equipment and materials, it will also include space for the mooring of barges along the river. Additional improvements proposed will include a new, new chain link fencing with gate, a widened driveway approach to North River Road and a, and an extended culvert in conjunction with that widened driveway approach. I, in reviewing the site plan, there are a, a number of deficiencies, and that's based on the assumption, because nothing in their application materials indicated otherwise, that this is a permanent proposed use at this location. So, I think, I think that is something that the applicant should clarify. We saw Huron Point Excavating previously when they were looking at for a temporary location at another area. And the temporary, a temporary use is a different approval process. It still requires a public hearing. But the Planning Commission has more discretion in terms of area and setback and operational characteristics and screening and things of that nature. So, I think that is one thing that we should ask the applicant to clarify before the public hearing starts. Is this a permanent location, or is this a temporary, so they're seeking temporary use approval from the Planning Commission? If it's a permanent use, which again, everything on the application appears to suggest that, it's, it's not intended for a, you know, temporary period, then everything in my review letter would apply. And probably the biggest concern is that to establish a waterfront, waterfront use at this location, the ordinance requires a minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet. The property is 20,000 square feet, but they're only leasing half of it, so 11,000. So, with that small size, this location, and quite frankly, very unique shape, this location will be hard pressed to meet the waterfront district requirements. So, I think that's something that's very important to clarify, is, you know, permanent or temporary nature of this operation being proposed.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Um, no, I think that's it.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant present?
Hi, my name's Colrausch with Huron Point Excavating. I guess I'm not sure whether to zone or call it a temporary or permanent, because we are leasing the space. I didn't realize the setbacks had to be so far, so we are going to not do the fence or bring in the dumpster, but it would literally be just two more barges. Park barges, no different than leasing it out to boat renters, so.
So, why don't we, why don't we clarify, I'm, I'm sure most of the residents know that the reason that you're doing this is you, you were vacated from your previous location because Macomb County is updating the bridge off of South River Road, and, and your temporary location, you were vacated from that. I'm sorry, your secondary location, you didn't fit the requirements, and so you were, you found this as a, as a potential. Once, so let's just clarify, temporary versus permanent. Once the bridge work is complete, are you planning on returning to that previous location on, I think you were right on the lake?
No, not at this time. The lake level's too low over there, and then the lady that currently owns the lot, she's restoring it back, and I believe her son is taking over.
Okay.
She was an older lady.
So, then that would indicate that this plan, this small portion of property is, is planned to be a permanent.
Correct.
Establishment for you. Okay. Okay. Okay, um, okay, sorry for that interruption. So, we've got that clarified. Okay, go ahead and please.
I would just like to respectfully respond to everybody opposing to the vacant lot. Our company has operated in Harrison Township for many decades, you know, doing shoreline production, seawalls, docks, dredging, and our work, you know, our object of our job is to protect the shoreline and make stability and increase the property value. It's not to come in and make everybody upset or cause disruption. That's not our goal at all. We try to keep our barges maintained and neat and funnily as possible. They're small, they're work barges, they, in the industry, yeah, they do tend to get a little rough, but we do our best to keep it maintained. We aren't, I didn't realize, like I said, the setbacks were so far, so we're not gonna propose the fence for any upland storage, no equipment or anything, so it's strictly just gonna be water-based.
Okay. And you've provided to, to us your proposed use and then a list of enclosures for the paperwork on the site that you've provided. Have you had an opportunity to review the planner's letter?
Yes, yep.
And the engineer's letter?
Yep.
And selfridges?
I was, yeah, I was just provided it earlier this week, so.
Okay.
I can revise it and remove everything and just literally.
So, you're prepared to make all the necessary adjustments.
Yep.
Following the permanent path?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions from the commissioners at this point for the applicant before we open up the hearing? Any questions from the applicant to us before we open the public hearing?
No. I guess just not let everybody, saying over and over.
Well, that's, that's common, yeah. I mean, that's, that's in my instructions, normal instructions, yeah. Okay. While you want to...
I just have one question that maybe you could answer, if you would. So, this says barge access and storage yard, so is the intent changed? Is it not gonna be?
Yes, the intent has changed.
So, will it not be a storage yard, it's just gonna be barge access?
Correct.
So, all, all that land will be vacant?
Just for, literally parking, correct. And bring barges into the water, park them with the tugboats and the barge, and get on a dock, get in our cars, and come and go.
Will there be any loading or unloading at the site under the barges?
If it's not proposed, no. They'll have to get a permit to allow space.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Okay, yep, have a seat and...
Chair Mary.
Yes, sir.
Just a point of concern. There's a lot to unpack on this one, I think, with the change to the intent of what we're actually reviewing tonight and the items listed by our planner.
Mm-hmm.
I'm gonna make the motion to table this item until following months, whenever they're ready, to bring the information back with the change in the scope of the project and to outline the site plan review topics that were presented tonight by our planner.
And not hold the public hearing?
And not hold the public hearing. I think we're, I think we're getting into a level that we just don't really know what we're unpacking with this.
So, are you making that motion?
I'm making it.
Or is that up, is that up for discussion?
Up for discussion, certainly.
Okay, 'cause I want to involve Rosemary.
Well, I believe that, I think that's an appropriate motion, given that the fact that the, the scope of the request is completely changed now.
Everything we have in front of us.
So, that was the planner's opportunity to take that information and give you a revised recommendation, and whatever the applicant wants to, you know, update their plans as well, and then we just renotice it. Everything has to be renoticed, though.
I just want to make sure we're not stepping on the toes of the, of the residents since we went at it and we publicized the public hearing.
No, but if the applicant is making that change, then they, they could have, before the meeting, withdrawn it and then resubmitted it, too.
Ah, okay, got it.
So, it's essentially that process.
All right.
Happening right now.
And I guess I just have one more question, I guess, follow-up, since this has been introduced, but what I heard the planner talk about is that the square footage still does not meet our special land use requirement, so the applicant would have to take a look at that and consider that in his re redoing or reconstruction of the submission.
So, okay, so, motion by Mr. Duncan to table, so did you want to just declare that then? Motion to table due to scope change, project change, to allow the applicant to re-prepare the correct application for...
Illicit elements, as explained by the planner. And basically, to give the public a better understanding of what we're even considering.
Okay.
You know, it's, even though it's a different type of waterfront area, it's still our job to try to make things as best as we can.
Agreed.
There's a lot to go through here.
Yeah, there is. There's a lot that we don't have to consider now. Okay. So, motion as stated to table. Do I have a second? Mr. Baccia? Any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I, I do have one question. It's actually for Rosemary. Being that they're not the property owner, everything I see on here says Clinton River Boathouse LLC and that they're leasing. As leasing under land contract, are they able to apply for it, or would it be the actual owner of the property that would need to be applying for the special land?
The owner should sign up on the application as well, which I think...
He did. I think they have, okay.
Yes, they can come in as the last year.
And we can, okay.
Yes.
I did see that, but we're, we're really approving...
That's fine.
Yeah, the owner, okay.
Okay, so we have a motion, I'm, I'm sorry, did that...
Yes.
Motion by Mr. Duncan, supported by Mr. Baccia, to table case number 20-25 special land use for Huron Point Excavating, to allow the applicant to prepare an updated application referencing the updated use of the property. Any discussion, any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so, so you're tabled to allow you to go ahead and update, and so did you understand all, all of that? Okay, all right, excellent. Yeah, why don't you go ahead and come up? Yeah, I know this is kind of unusual, this is the first time we've done this, so.
Well, I, do the plans have to be engineered if it's just waterfront property? Again, the question about the square footage is, can I meet with somebody or possibly go over, like, information about what is required? Because I feel like I've been here a few times and...
I think she can come to the, to the planner's office and, or to the building and zoning office and, and get a copy of what the requirements are for special land use on waterfront.
You can talk to, talk to Melody, and certainly she can get you my contact information. We could also do a tech team meeting where you can meet with the engineer and the building department and the planning department at the same time.
That'd probably be a good idea.
We can talk through those, and if we need to pull in Rosemary, we can do that as well.
Okay.
All of that would go through Melody and the building and planning and zoning department.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, next item, Mr. Baccia.
Next item is unfinished business zoning amendment discussion.
Mr. Young. We were provided with an updated, an updated amendment based on our changes the last time we were together. Did you want to discuss those?
Yes, okay. So, we have been working through zoning ordinance amendments at the Planning Commission level for some time. We reviewed a draft at the most recent Planning Commission meeting, which was the August Planning Commission meeting. And the Planning Commission had a couple of requested changes to the amendments. The first one, and so, and then we provided an updated draft. You'll notice that the memos, I put the wrong cover memo in there, here's the correct one up on screen, but it just calls out where the changes have occurred. So, the first one is, in, in the, in the ordinance draft, remember, we addressed, we're proposing to address short-term rentals by disallowing them in the residential districts, but allowing them in the commercial districts. One of the comments was, there is a maximum occupancy that was established in the proposed regulations based on, I think, the number of bedrooms, and the Planning Commission asked for a maximum, maximum regardless of the number of bedrooms, like 12. And so, that is in the language, that's in the draft language there. That's on page 73. So, maximum occupancy, again, commercial districts only is what we're talking about. Not to exceed two occupants per bedroom plus two additional occupants, but not exceeding 12, 12 total occupants.
That, that would be in commercial only, correct?
Correct. Yes, I can clarify again. In our commercial districts, the local commercial GCV1 and V1A residential waterfront, waterfront districts, not our, not any of the single-family residential, the mobile home or the multifamily residential districts.
So, what would a residential waterfront be, an example?
Residential waterfront, I believe, I believe that is in the zoning map, which I do have on the, residential waterfront is in the green on the zoning map, the light green. So, there's up, really at the tip of South River, those properties are residential waterfront right here. And I, that may be it.
So, I guess, why, why would we include that if we, if we don't, we don't want to allow Airbnbs in residential areas? What's the difference between waterfront residential and residential? I don't see any difference. And if that's where, that's what our goal is, I guess I'd want to exclude that, not include that.
Exclude that, meaning not even a...
Would not be, would not be allowed.
Not have short-term rentals. I, I'd be okay with that.
Yeah, I'm gonna play devil's advocate here, because looking at the zoning map, if you're, if you're not gonna allow it in the residential waterfront, then I would say just exclude all waterfront, because there's kind of a mix between residential and regular waterfront, and then that, all those areas are basically surrounded directly by residential.
Single family.
Yeah. So, I mean, it, you have pockets where, you know, basically the lots on either side wouldn't allow, but one in the middle would, based on if it's just regular waterfront and not residential waterfront.
So, the WF district as well, that's the light blue on the map here. Yeah. That's, yeah. So, essentially, like, like if somebody wanted to put a hotel there and it's zoned WF, they would need to get a rezoning to a commercial district.
I would think that would be reasonable.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think a hotel as a short-term rental is much, maintained much different than, for example, an Airbnb type of short-term rental.
Next to a single-family home on the water, just because it's waterfront, they re, they deserve their privacy as well.
Not, not that I take issue with the whole conversation, I'm with it, but I'm sure, I trust we all realize that a short-term rental by nature always occurs in residential districts.
Yes.
So, once you, once you eliminate residential, you eliminate short-term rentals almost in, almost in totality.
Yeah.
Right, and I think that was the intent, and I know that, you know, we, we've had a lot of inquiries at the board level regarding Airbnbs in the township and the disruption that they caused throughout the township for, you know, residents that, you know, live and breathe and...
Yep. I'm not opposed to the outcome.
Okay, I'd be glad to make that change. And then the, of the second revision, with regard to the planning and development district, as you remember, we were talking about... As you remember, we were talking about minimum lot size for eligibility for planned unit development. So, got some additional information for you, let me just double check.
Page number, please.
Page 157, I believe. Yes, okay. 157.
Okay.
So, the, the current language, the current language says that a parcel of land proposed for a planned unit development shall be a minimum of 40 acres. That's the current language. And we had talked, and I think we were in agreement, that 40 acres was too much, given that there's few, few properties that are actually, in fact, only 24 properties in the entire township are larger than 40 acres in size, and most of them are owned by either Harrison Township or Huron Clinton Metro Park or Selfridge or the golf course, you know, the schools. So, we agreed that 40 acres is probably too much, but what we did not agree on is what, what should the new revised be? I did, you asked, could we do like a color-coded map by parcel size? I did prepare that. I will pull that up on screen here, just to kind of get an idea of, okay, what if we said one acre? What if we said five acres, 10, so on and so forth? So, here's that map. So, the, in this beige color, which is, most properties in the township are less than one acre, the yellow, the yellow is one to two acres in size. You can see the distribution.
Does this cross-reference it all to the public space versus private space?
No.
Occupied versus?
No.
Okay.
This is simply, every parcel in the township, how big are they?
Okay.
Yep. Two to five is in this greenish, light greenish color. Five or more is the, the light blue, and then the 40 or more are the purple properties here.
So, we know that's the part.
Yeah. So, I, as I've suggested, that 40, 40 acres as a minimum is too much because it excludes nearly the entirety of the township. I think the question is, what is a reasonable size? There are certainly many more properties that are five acres, at least five acres in size. So, you can see all of those in blue. Include some good-sized properties that you could probably do some unique developments. That is one of the things that planned unit development would allow. If you set anything over two acres in size, that opens up the opportunity for many additional properties to be considered, but still, most, most of the properties yet in the township are, are less than two and even one acre in size.
So, if we looked at the five, five-acre properties and larger, I mean, this, this wouldn't still remove our ability to, you know, have, yeah, waive it, have...
That's right.
But then we would have, if we looked at a two or three or four acre, we would have more discretion over looking at the individual property where five acres above seems more consistent with what we're trying to get to.
I would agree. And then that was part, kind of part two of this revision here. We had said, we, we didn't like, or we thought that the standards that are currently written in the ordinance to allow a reduction from the 40 acres presently, but if we say changed it to five acres, we could still allow the planning commission to grant an exception. So, previously, the language, and I've got it up on screen, it was three criteria that the planning commission would, would use, would consider as to whether to grant a waiver. The proposed density is consistent with that what would be expected by development under the conventional standards of the zoning. The proposed PUD is consistent with the Harrison Township master plan. And then this last one, which I think somebody had mentioned, it just doesn't really make sense, it's at the location of two roads or in an area of transition between lower and higher intensity uses. I thought, to be clear, what we could do, the two standards could be, number one, does it achieve, is it a sufficient size, in the planning commission's opinion, to achieve the objectives of planned unit development, which is stated in subsection A earlier? So, what are the objectives? Require innovation in land use and variety in design, preserve natural features, require the preservation of open space, permit flexibility in mixture of land, so on and so forth. So, okay, if you can, if the, if you want to do a two-and-a-half acre parcel, for example, can it, is it sufficient enough to be able to achieve those objectives? And then, second, would the proposed PUD result in a great, or you'd have to find that the proposed PUD would result in greater conformance with the intent of the Harrison Township master plan in comparison to development based on the underlying zoning issue? So, essentially, if, if you can better achieve the objectives of the master plan for that area...
Than that would...
By doing the PUD option, then not doing the PUD option, that's consideration number two. So, those are the changes there. Thoughts are?
Personally, I like setting the minimum of five acres, but I do really like the, the criteria, the, the two points that you've changed here from the three and the way you've referenced back to subsection A, so...
It's cleaner.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree with the five or more.
I agree to that, that commentary. Would we find it strategic that, that we say that it can't be any smaller than one acre? Is there, is there any strategy to that to say...
We're going to just cap it that you can't be any smaller than one acre? Because when you get down to, you get less than one acre, you're probably never going to achieve all those objectives, something less than an acre.
And we, we had one proposed that was less than an acre or about an acre, and I think we struggled to see how it could achieve.
Right, right. You'll have a hard time achieving. I, I just wouldn't want to find that you're going to do a PUD for a single-family dwelling unit. That just defies the entire intent of a PUD.
If we set the minimum, if we're setting the minimum at five...
We have the right to reduce.
Right.
I'm just saying, we have the right to reduce, but at no point can it ever be smaller than one acre. And if we don't feel there's any risk with it, I, I just, I brought it up that way, we feel there's a risk with not setting the lower cap.
If we don't set a limit, someone will ask.
Someone will try to go in for a half acre PUD, I don't know.
Two and a half acre?
No. Well, or pick a, pick a number.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, pick a number.
I, I agree with where you're going with that on, you know, the potential for someone with a lot smaller than one acre, but at, at that point, we're saying, well, we won't go below one acre, so we might as well just set the minimum at one because we're basically telling people, anything from one to five, we're probably going to get there anyway. So, I would prefer just leaving it five with discretion, but I definitely understand where you're going with it, that, I just, I can't see it meeting the criteria with that small property, which is where we've run into problems before.
Agreed.
Agreed. Very well.
Good to bring up, though, because in the time that we've been here, we've certainly been confronted with a serious ask, so...
Okay. And then, the only other revision, or in this case, an addition, as you remember, we had also looked at township-initiated zoning map changes, and one add from last month was this property that's along North River Road, between North River Road and Old North River Road, that is entirely governmentally owned, state-of-Michigan owned, similar to the HCMA property and the township property, the large 150-acre township property, looking to change that to the recreation and open space district, essentially ensuring that it would remain...
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, in that category.
So, I brought it up last time, the, the piece of property, it's kind of a rectangle on Jefferson with the little notch cut, cut, cut out of the upper-left corner. I still believe that, we're talking about turning into recreation and open space, I still believe that there is a sign currently listing that for sale to be developed.
Can you turn around, is it this property right here?
Yes. If you, on Jefferson, there is a current sign to sell that and develop it.
Okay.
And now, I don't, it all looks like wetlands, I don't even know if that's possible, but...
Yeah, yeah. I, I know that we identified this because it was identified on the master plan because it was identified as entirely wetlands.
I just don't know, you know, if someone is out there currently trying to sell it and develop it, if we can just move forward with...
To move forward with any zoning change to the property owner, would get a notice?
Yeah.
They would have an opportunity to...
To appeal.
And, and share their thoughts.
Okay.
So, that's...
Yeah.
Yeah, because this is what they're doing.
I know we, like, we had discussed last time that they thought it was a different piece of property, but I, the sign literally has that exact same shape on it, which is why I believe that that's the property that is being...
And...
Yeah, it, yeah, it is fairly recent.
So, the, I'd be glad to have any additional discussion that you'd like, but we have gone through everything at this point, and essentially, the next step would be to schedule a public hearing to hear, giving citizen additional feedback on the draft.
I agree. That's what I'm waiting, make a motion on, or do you just need to request that from the...
I would make a motion.
Okay, I will make that motion. For public hearing to review the master plan amendments?
Zoning ordinance.
Zoning, thank you.
Motion to review?
To set a public hearing.
Set a public hearing. Or review that.
Thank you. Motion to set a public hearing for review. Do we have a second?
Support.
Mr. Batsho. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. No new business, no correspondence, comments from the planner?
Yes, we did have a tech team meeting earlier this month. I'm just going to pull up my notes here so I can share the results of those cases. We had one request, this was from the Rejoiceful Animal Rescue, currently located in Clinton Township, I believe, exploring potential new location in Harrison Township in the industrial district. And it would be, it could be allowed by the ordinance as a special land use, so this was a discussion only, just wanting to get a feel of the possibilities and to better understand the procedures. And so, possibly, we may see an application in the future for animal shelter, animal rescue shelter.
Any, any explanation of just dogs and cats or horses, monkeys?
Just dogs and cats.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to clarify.
Yep.
Thank you.
The next one was Mold Masters, also in the industrial district, the placement of a, a shipping container on their industrial property. And actually, this one was for, during the time of their construction, so this would be a temporary one, although we've seen several requests, and the tech team has approved several shipping containers inside or rear yards in industrial properties. And then, the third one was Emerald Green, so that was the rezoning that we had seen a couple of months ago, that the planning commission recommended to dial, and the township board ended up denying. They came back to tech team and are, are just wanting to explore other options. And so, we basically laid out other options for them, and we now know what they may decide.
Okay.
Obviously, anything they would want to do to try and develop that property would come through. That's all I have.
Thank you. Comments from the floor? Mr. Sunstock, good to see you tonight.
You're not really meaning that.
I am meaning that, I haven't seen you in a long time, it's nice to see you, I don't know about it.
I just want to discuss, and I realize we've already tabled the other item, but I do think it's, needs to be brought out that...
Oh, three minutes, please.
Okay.
Go ahead, sorry, I didn't stay there.
I, Jim Sunstock, 31698 San Juan. Since that sign went up down there, I've noticed a large semi-truck and flatbed trailer, trailers, two pushboats, roll-off dumpster, limited, well, they didn't do the limited accessories that I could tell, but the, the fact of the matter is, they also tore out several wells, and according to your ordinance, they're required to come to the planning commission before they tear out anything over there.
That's HPE you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah, HPD or the property owner, because he's, he's also proposing with some new wells in over there on, that's on the site plan. So, I, I, I mean, what is a procedure if they're going to, now they come in and they saw the people here, they got the letter from Venice Shores, and I guess they figured, well, we'll stall it off and see if we can get rid of these people for the next time. Guarantee it won't happen. So, I had a whole list of stuff, probably would have went over my three-minute thing, but they're violating everything. That property is less than 80 feet wide, they says 80 foot on, on the site plan, 15 feet of that is in the water on the Clinton's Riverside. So, what are they going to do? Fill that in? They said they weren't going to do anything with the gravel parking lot or the gravel road. Go out and look at it, it's been graded, it's been graded, up until right at where the new or the old property owner is going to stay. So, they told you that they weren't going to do that, then they did it. These are bad actors, and we're going to be here, because we don't want to look at that crap. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lee William Bartel, 37865 Point Rosa. I just wanted to mention that these barges, I know they change their scope, but these barges, I find it hard to believe that they won't be stockpiled with materials. I can't see how you wouldn't have a lay-down area. So, in essence, they're going to have their lay-down area on those barges, is what I'm thinking. I can't see how on God's green earth you would run that kind of operation without some sort of staging area. So, I believe, I don't know if we need to sharpen our pencils and what these barges out there parked, I know it's going to look like HE double hockey sticks, but even more, those barges will be packed, I believe, with steel and materials, and they will, that will be part of their staging area. So, there's a little smoke and mirrors going on, and just everyone stay where, aware, and that land over there on Jefferson, let's keep an eye on that to make sure they're not backfilling that. So, anybody, keep your helmets on, your, Mrs. Kravitz binoculars ready, and let's find out what's going on over there, because they could be backfilling. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Bartel.
Hi, I'm Mary D'Apoll, 41492 Glockamora, Harrison Township. I just have a question about the short-term rental in the material presented. What are you clarifying as short-term? A week, a month, three months, six months? Because when we did our, redid our deed restrictions in the subdivision about short-term rentals, the lawyer required us to be specific about what we were... the lawyer required us to be specific about what we were calling that, so we wouldn't get into any legal battles with what we were clarifying as a short-term rental. So, that might be something, and I don't know, maybe I missed it, but might be something you need to look at as to, what are you clarifying as short-term?
Thank you.
Just a comment, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Here's the proposed definition, 30 days, less than 30 days. No, we didn't say it during the meeting.
We had discussed it in prior meetings, over the amendments, we skipped over just the current changes.
Great question.
Anything else? Okay, if nothing else, our next meeting is November 20th, 2025. May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So, move to court.
Mr. Mulder, supported by Mr. Tomonello, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, thank you for coming tonight.